Welcome to tonight's Acton Selectmen's meeting, September 16th, 2020. And it is, I believe, probably 6:08 by now. We're going to call the meeting to order. And then we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and King Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In this bill of liberty and justice.
Alrighty. Town Administrator Weekly Update.
With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd ask you to add D petition to new business. I inadvertently left it off, so.
New business, D?
D petitions.
Petition.
All right, just a few things that have been inundated with absentee ballots. Acton's over 600 now.
Oh, wow.
And of course taxes went out, so just a short list for you. Motor Vehicles is going to do some spot training and some auditing. So they're going to be coming to Acton on September 29th and September 30th, which is good news for me because that means that my assistant gets trained. And we're also going to have the authority to move up to the next truck level. Currently, we can only register vehicles that have a GBW of 26,000 pounds. This is going to allow us to go up to 85,000. And we'll be able to do boosters and stuff. So you had to hit a certain criteria with the state and have be an agent in a certain standing for so long before they'd let you. So what I need from you was permission to close the office on the 30th, second day, from 12 to 4. Essentially, on the 29th, he'll be with just Kayla in the other room doing the basic training. And then the second day, he'll train with her in the morning. But that afternoon, when we do the truck training, she might as well sit in on it as well.
Okay. Yes, that's 2 to 4 on the 30th?
12 to 4.
12 to 4.
Is that okay?
Yep, it's fine with me.
On the 30th, yeah.
On the 30th, 12 to 4. Last week, you guys talked about essentially stopping the use of the town hall for anything outside of town-related departments and committees, looking for clarification from the board in regard to the library. Do you consider that, that we're on their own 501(c) they can they use it? Are they part of the exemption or?
Well, I'm thinking that, you know, they do their own hours, they do their own cleaning and stuff, right?
No. Well, they clean their own, yeah, they have their own hours, they have their own cleaning. But our staff would clean up after the hall used. I just didn't know if you considered that a town department committee?
What are they getting in?
They'll have a couple of the parachute events, bring some kids in, have a little, you know, I mean, I can't imagine they'll do more than one or two. And the librarian is very good with social distancing and masks. I mean, get support kids out a little bit. It's not like it's going to be every day.
Right. Yeah, part of the town, so.
Yeah, I agree.
You okay with that?
I am, I'm fine with that.
Good.
As long as it's cleaned up afterwards.
Yep. Speaking of cleaning, our office assistant has managed so far to keep up with each one of the meetings. She's come over even last night after the road workshop ended. She came over and did the cleaning, so you'll see that in the payroll this week. After each meeting, she stays for an hour and does that.
Thank you.
So thank you, Cheryl. We appreciate you. Just an FYI, more for you, David, that Mary Grant changed their meeting this Saturday from 10 to 11.
And that was what before?
It was at 10. They moved it to 11. It's still at the cemetery, oh, it's in the cemetery, still at the Mary Grant. And it will still be filmed, right?
It started at 10.
Uh, no, according to the last email I got, just got one from, they changed it to 11.
Oh, okay.
You're on the committee, they didn't tell you that?
No.
All right. Once we get into something where someone else is talking, I'd love to check my emails and make sure I didn't make a mistake, but. Not me, Cheryl. Oh, the generator.
What's it doing now?
Same thing. I'm telling you, I'm in the wrong business. I've got this figured out. If the power goes out, it won't test that week. Last week, it tested perfectly, the power didn't go out. This week, the power went out this morning for just a flicker, and then it doesn't reset. So the electrician, you know, feels like he's done some basic troubleshooting. So we have called the company, and they're going to be out Monday between 10 and 11, I think is the time. So we'll see what's going on. I mean, it's less than a year, it's covered under warranty, but.
Right.
We're trying to stay on top of it so we don't get in the same situation. I'm wondering where we're standing with the capital improvement committee. I have two residents that are not affiliated with town, I mean, they live in town, they've been in town for many years, but they don't serve on any committees or volunteer in any sense. And he came in today and asked me what committees we had open, so we reviewed his choices. And he and his wife are interested in being on the capital improvement committee. I just, you know, I want to present to the board more people if we're not ready to move forward with it.
We'll have to go through a policy, don't we?
I'm ready to move.
You're ready to move?
How many people do we have that's interested?
Well, I'm still waiting for instruction from the board on one of the individuals if we're reappointing, so I don't know. I mean, if you're appointing.
What do you mean re?
I'm sorry?
I thought you said reappoint.
No, no, if you're appointing a particular individual, so I don't know how many openings we have because you haven't really, so.
We were doing, we were doing, what, a five-person board?
Yep. Whoever we have, if we've got, I mean, you know, if they're all interested, then let's get started.
All of them?
Well, five.
Five.
So do we have more than five looking to get on right now?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, do we have?
Yes, this will make six.
Okay, so.
I can present you the names next week.
Okay.
You can look at them in front of you and decide if you want to make motions on them.
Sounds good.
I'm looking for the board's permission to have yet another conversation, this time it'll involve the deputy with an individual in town without mentioning their names, to review the do's and don'ts of what's allowed and not allowed in the building and threats and the statements that aren't allowed, you know, in the building. Downstairs is being close to, you know, verbally harassed by an individual. I sent you guys an email yesterday, tried to get the individual to sit down. At this point, with your permission, I'm going to tell him he's not allowed to go downstairs without going through me first. He can't speak to people like that. You know, you have a concern, let's sit down, let's talk about it, let's get to the bottom of it, but you can't just walk in and start speaking to people the way he does. So I thought I would bring the deputy in and just, I had offered the meeting with basically the four or five of us, whatever you decide, with the department head, three, the person. He doesn't want to meet with the department head. I'm telling him that it's really not an option because without that department head being able to reply to the concerns, the board is just not going to be able to, that's not your area of expertise. So I'm still kind of working on him. I did sneak out a little early today, as you know, and apparently he was back and it got nasty, might be an overkill, but he's using more than he shouldn't, and I'm not ready to allow it in this building.
Okay.
I just need you to nod, so when I say something, it's going to be good. Road Commissioner District One was in today, and we had a chat about sand and salt bids, and we talked about putting that together. It's funny, I think one of you mentioned it beforehand, so I'll have something off to, Will basically was asking if we needed to wait till the position was filled, and it was both of our recommendations that there's no reason to.
No.
You know, a simple sand bid isn't really going to change regardless of who's in the position. So Will and I will put that together and have something to present to you for next week.
Very much so.
That's good.
I'm sorry?
Last year's bid sheet.
Yeah, basically, it's a copy and paste. Unless, I mean, I always presented to the road commissioners to see if they want to make any changes to the board. So, let me be quick. All right, I'm going to cut my list short for tonight, so that's it.
All right. I think we've all signed the warrants and the bills.
I have a little bit more to sign, but I'll do it after the meeting.
So we need to approve the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda with the addition of D under new business. And that was, was it petition, is that what you said?
Please.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting, 9, September 9th.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All opposed? I mean, yeah, all in favor?
And we will have the.
All opposed?
Sorry.
Okay.
We will have the second ready for you next week because of the Labor Day and the extensive public comment. I just want to make sure that everybody's words are accurate.
Okay. Next is our department head, committee chair updates.
And then I'm aware of.
Okay. Old business, A, Pike invoice.
Will, it looks the same from here. Can you come up here for me? So, I want to say two weeks ago, three weeks ago, time flies, he presented to you his H Road project, and in that was an X amount from Pike that you approved. And they sent something over wanting us to sign off, and, you know, we basically said to them, because it had several different roads included in it, we asked them to break it out so that the board wasn't tying themselves to other projects at this time because we weren't even sure if it was something he wanted. Long story short, he sent over a new bid, but it increased by, here we go. All right, so here's the old one, and the new one increased by 77.50, which is handwork, but Will, David, I'm sure somebody can explain why that wasn't in the original quote.
I talked to Greg this afternoon, and you put that in there because we do have quite a few hot tub drivers that are going to have to handle again there, so that's why that's just that extra expense. So you've got the can ground, I think it's $500 hot tub. You're going to have to do the handwork, that was just the added expense.
And I understand that the budget allows for it, just the board couldn't sign the contract that was, you know, inaccurate or not updated, I should say.
And that's what, 77, did you say 77?
Yeah, so that would be the total. If you can just amend the amount approved of the Pike for the H Road project, for the one that has just Pike on there, I think that will guarantee they'll be there Monday. Right, is that your work?
No, no, it's your.
Did you bring me something? You were going to bring me a?
No, I'll drop it off tomorrow.
Okay.
We approved, what did we approve?
So down bottom, you can see my little note, it was like.
It was like 180.
180.
187.40 is what we approved.
Yep.
So 187.40, it's going to be 188.490.
Up to, it's a chance that the handwork may come in a little lower, right?
Okay. Okay. So I guess we just need to, need a motion on this?
Please.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we amend the Pike quote, the H Road project, to 188,490. Up to.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Perfect, I just get a couple of signatures, so I'll get that sent right over in the morning so you'll be good to go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to sign this?
Yes.
Ah.
Put your name and date in, just initial it for me.
Okay.
Just the new one.
All right. Next thing is B, personal business.
Personnel policy?
Personnel, oh, policy. I thought you said business.
It could, it's been under those couple of days. All right, so this has been ongoing, actually came back, started back in August, I looked at the minutes from August 10th, this came up last year, I'm not going to restart it all over. Basically, last week, you were to kind of think about whether or not you wanted to leave the personnel policy the way that you voted in August 10th, or if you wanted to make an amendment to change it back the way it was regarding the additional closure days, if you will.
I want to keep the way I chose last, the last time. I don't, I don't feel a need to change it. We made a decision, so I'm sticking with that for myself.
You're going to reword it, you're going to pull that section out.
We're going to just pull that, right?
Yeah, I just didn't want to make any changes to until I knew the direction you were headed in. And I told you that Michelle, treasure, excuse me, had a couple of minor changes as well. So now knowing what you want to do, I'll present that to you next week, and you can review them all together.
Okay. So.
Can we just get that Pike thing?
Yep. Do I need to do both of them?
No, so this one is, yeah, this one's done.
Okay, all right, that one's done. Alrighty. Yep. Um, okay, we've got new business, and A is Town of Wakefield has a presentation for us.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Charlie Abits. I'm the Town Selectman for Town of Wakefield. I am here to discuss a long overdue project that we've had for many years, the Canal Bridge.
Yes.
Is everybody familiar with the Canal Bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Canal Bridge has been red listed by our state. I'm not positive about your own state, but it has been listed by our state, which could easily be shut down immediately if a rock fell out of place. It's down to a three-ton limit, which probably is still unsafe for anything to pass over. This bridge is historically on the registry of historical deeds, which, what that means is you touch this bridge, you touch it, and you have to fix it the way it wants. I don't believe there's many people that can build this thing the way it is. So my, my thought is to try to avoid touching this bridge. I have, I have made a small presentation, it's about eight minutes long. The first minute, it was for our town to begin with, so the first minute, just tell us the names of seven bridges that they have in town. I would like to put it on the end of the table, you can watch it, and that will get us into the debate of it, and then I'll, I'll give you my, my thoughts, and then I'll make this as short as I can possibly do to keep you pretty busy, okay?
All right.
Like I said, the first minute, it's going to just tell you, you know, our bridges, all of them, and, but they'll go right into, I'm not connected to the internet, of course.
If I can help you with that one.
You have to show me, because this is where I'm not at. That's what I want, right, to have that document.
You've got to be connected to the internet first.
I'll hand this to you, just while she's doing that for me. What we gave us as a town, we, our prior administration was, let me say it nicely, they liked to, they liked to bring in the big people. So we, they hired HEB Engineering Company, which a lot of us do in this area, and they're a very conglomerate company. So we hired them to do an analysis on all the bridges, and this was one that they did analysis on. And they've done a, and this is a picture of it, it shows you what we've done, and how big it is, and what they proposed for recommendations. Now, they proposed that we go to the state and apply for these grants. Well, if you knew me, I'm not a grant lover, because I believe that grants come with strengths, and strengths you don't want. So I had the DOT in my office and brought them in to discuss how much money the state has. Now, the state says they got all kinds of money, that they're going to give this money in 2026, that you can apply for. Well, that means that at this minute, if this bridge cost you a million dollars, you have to put the million dollars out, and then apply for this grant, and then in '26, you're apt to get the 80%. Sounds good? But the state doesn't have any money. I don't know about your state, but I know my state doesn't have any money. So I asked them, point blank, I had the big shots in my office, and at the end of our foundation, I told them to don't fail me for the baloney, tell me the truth. And we can't, we can't wait. He said they didn't have any money. So you're probably not going to get any money. Once you involve the state, what happens when you involve the state, things trouble. Your money's being from one million goes to three million. I don't like that. I don't know about you, but I don't like to spend money that I don't, that I don't believe anybody must have. So what I did was, I told them that if we involve the state, you have to do what the state tells you to do. Doesn't mean specifications, it means buying their stuff, everything to do with their engineers, their this, their that, their everything. So that means the volume of money goes to here, and it should be here. So my thought was, you're going to put up the money anyway, why not try to keep it local? Keep it to the people that care about communities. So I called in another engineering firm, because it's on the court staff. They told me that we don't need to do all of these things that the state is requiring. They require, doesn't mean you don't hold the stress, just because you don't, you don't ask them for the problem to fix. We fix it. That can keep your costs down. The engineering part of this could be $100,000 just to have an engineered bridge for a 20-foot bridge. We're talking a, a, a little bridge. I called this engineering company in, they can do the same thing, they do a lot of this for the small communities, the local towns, they're right around engineering, the public get out of this for $15,000. So what I did was, I called the bridge company in. Bridge company come in, they have engineers, right on staff, they have, they're just not a conglomerate bridge company that build, let's say, the, the, the bridge that goes into Boston, those kinds of bridges. We're talking about a, a bridge that you can almost build just out of. So what I did was, is I called them in, and we got some, we got some numbers that pulled sharp. Did she figure it out?
She took it to figure it out, so.
All right, so then let's just pretend we don't get it. What's going to happen is, in this presentation, it's telling me there's three levels that this big company, HEB, is an engineering company, said, said that you could spend anywhere from $500,000 to $1.2 million on this bridge. Well, I don't want to spend either, okay? I called in a company that, and the, the way you don't spend any money is you don't touch the bridge. Don't touch the canal. The canal is your, is your enemy. It, if you touch it, it becomes a whole different animal, and we're all in trouble because we're going to cost you a fortune. I want to build a bridge over the top of it. And how to do that? Well, it's a bridge that's dividing you between Wakefield and Acton. So that means I can't spend Wakefield's tax pay as money on this bridge until you spend your tax pay as money on it also. We have to do this together.
So you're, well, you're connected to the internet, so now you need to go back to wherever your file was that you wanted to play.
The rest of it's up to you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's scary, too. Still not connected, so we're going to say hell with it.
Well, I had you on the Town of Acton's homepage.
I have to go back to the homepage?
Well, no, but I had, I pulled up the homepage so you could see you were connected.
Are you?
Is it something that you want to email to me, Will? Or do you have it, is it on your stick there? Or is that just a Bluetooth?
Yeah, I, I'm telling you right now, I am not internet savvy, so I'm going to throw it down the tubes and I'm going to explain it.
That's fine.
What I got here is a draft, I'm going to pass it over, this shows where it is.
Thank you.
What I want to do is, it's pretty simple, is make two walls on each side of the bridge, approximately 10, 15, 20 feet away from the canal itself, okay? That takes a boring machine to come in, to bore down into there, just to give us the okay, that it's okay to drill down in there and drill it in. And I want to make two pillars on both sides. I want to buy a bridge already precasted that can come on a crane, with a crane, off a truck, lift it up, set it down on there, never to touch that bridge again. It sounds very simple, I believe it is very simple, I just, I just, I don't know. This is all, this is not new to me, but this new technology is, is new. I have, I have quotes to do this bridge, at 800,000, 900,000, and 1.2 million to do this bridge. Well, that scares the hell out of me, I don't know about anybody else, but I went and did a lot of investigation, and I've got a, I've got a quote to do this for 145,000. It meets every town spec, state spec, everything, it just will not involve any of the state. All they got to do is inspect it, come out, make sure it's done to where they want it, and we do it. I'm going to give you a quick example. The guide rails on this thing, the doing it from the state regulations, for what the state wants to give me to do this, if I borrow the money from this, if I get the grants, I have to do the state way. It's about $35,000, $40,000 to do the guide rails. If I don't borrow the money from the state, we do this on our own, I can get out of it with the same specifications, the same guide rail for seven. That's just an example. So my, my opinion is to stay away from the state, I can't say it enough. So what I want to do is bring a bridge in, set it on top. The beauty of this is it's only going to take three months to do it. It's a two-week project. That means the road will be shut down for two weeks, and then you'll have it again. If we do it by state grant and all this other stuff, you're going to be shut down for half a summer. What I'd like to do is, like I said, this is just a preliminary thing, there's nothing binding, all I know is where you guys want to go with it. I can tell you, here's the, here's the, I want to hand this down, this is what I'm proposing to go up the top of it. Now, the kicker, which we all know is always the kicker, they need approaches on both sides. We have an approach on Wakefield's side, and Acton will have an approach on your side. Unfortunately, the Acton side approach is slightly bigger than our side, because you've got one other road to deal with, which is, I believe it's the C point road, that's the canal of the, the bolt-on road.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe there's anything there, so if, I've had my DPW give me an analysis of what he thought it would cost if it was ours, and we're thinking between 25,000 and 50,000, that you can do your approach, tie it, put the sand there, whatever you need to make your ramp. We have the same, roughly. So if it was 50,000 apiece, you're talking 100,000 plus 145,000 for the bridge, divide that in half, 145, it's 72,000 and, seventy-two thousand, 72,500 dollars for each of us, and then you handle your own approach, which I think would cost you, as a town, 25,000 to 50,000 to buy all the materials such as that. So the total project would be roughly 250,000, let's say, give or take. That's a five cry for 1.2 million. 1.2 million comes from, if this bridge gets shut down and it gives me to it, it becomes a temporary bridge if you want it to be able to do it, that's where it becomes expensive. You put a temporary one in, then you take it out and do another one. Who wants to do that? Not me. I want to fix it. If we fix it, the way the state wants us to borrow money, not borrow money, ask for grants, get the 80%, and who knows when, it's going to cost you between 800 to 1.2. If we do it ourselves, it's going to cost us 72,000 dollars apiece, plus give or take for the, the approaches on both sides. To me, it's a no-brainer. We don't involve the state, we don't involve anybody, we do it ourselves. Now, as a Town Selectman, I've done a lot of research on this, and I'm willing to run the project, as it did the bridge down. I won't come in and tell you people how to do your approach, that's what you have your own DPWs following. But I'm surely willing to put my effort in. I've already done all the rig work, and I've already spent a lot of money for analysis. But we're going to have to shut it down, and that's a nine-mile detour up. For anybody that lives over there or wants to go to Wakefield, or us wants to come to Acton, we got to go 109, and that's the way it works. And so I'm here to find out where you think you'd like to go with it, if you'd like to talk more about it. I can answer any questions, I don't know if I spoke very good, I had this all prepared.
How, how soon do you want to get started?
We won't get started this year.
Okay. All right.
You run on a. Do you run on a fiscal year or calendar year in Wakefield?
I don't know.
Do you, when is your town meeting?
Uh, March.
So you run on a calendar?
I think, I think that if we plan now, I don't think anybody's gonna come and shut us down unless something happens over there. I mean, as you all know, trucks go across that bridge every day. And I get, you know, I'm a contractor myself and I work on BC Point a lot and I, and it's just the way it works. But I just think as a team, we can do this and, and save the taxpayer money. That's my job. I think that's your job, you know? Um, but I can't do this alone. I surely can run it by myself.
What's the, uh, what's the weight limit gonna be on the new bridge?
If I was to guess, it's gonna be any truck.
Okay.
If that's, it's rated for that. Whether the state wants to make that, I mean, if all gets inspected by the state. Everything's watched by the state. The engineers are all state. If the engineers, what comes with, this is M A Bean Associates is the one that gave me the, the best quote. What comes with that is, um, you get the engineering for free, okay? Cause it's incorporated into the, into the cost of the, of the bridge. And we're going to get a, um, we're gonna get the card that needs to be filled out to take this off the red list. And that's important, cause that's all it's about. We gotta get it off the red list, cause if it stays on there, they're gonna shut it off. It's just not, I mean, I can't stop it, you can't stop it, it's the state. I don't know if it's New Hampshire or if it's me, um, to be honest with you. But, um, all these things come incorporated into it. Um, this guy has done many bridges for the smaller communities. These people understand that we don't have a lot of money. I don't think you have a lot of money. Um, I want to do this not for cheap cost, because I'm cutting corners. I just know you don't need to spend a million dollars on a 20-foot bridge. It just doesn't seem logical to me. So.
So you're looking at about a 20-foot span?
The, yeah, the bridge, the bridge says here, the engineers came up and they, um, right now it's a 10-foot span. But it's barely over the, over the pillars.
Right.
I need to get out here so we don't touch that. If this bridge falls, we're all in trouble. Because it's, the historical society, and I don't know if it's on our side to put this on that deed thing, but once it touches that, you can't touch this. It's, there's a, there's an active guard to be able to touch that.
Wasn't it Pam that kinda, was it Pam? That kinda got it.
I'm glad you did it.
Pam, I was gonna say, she's the one that did it, yeah, yeah.
Um, but we can go over the bridge. We don't have to touch it. There'll never ever be another ounce of weight on that canal. Once I get over the top of it. And this all comes on a truck. Lift it off, set down onto these pillars, and you're done. It'll come into two phases. It can be, I, I could pour it and do it myself. But as the concrete dries, it will lighten up as it goes. The only time there's ever weight on it is if we poured it in place and it's wet. As it dries through the day, it lightens up and everything is suspended. I like the idea of buying it. It's a little easier, set in, that's how this, this new, this guy here has proposed it, um, to do it that way. And I'm okay with that. We as a town are ready. We're willing to jump and move. It's not gonna happen this year. It'll happen in the spring. That's the only bad part. I would figure a 10% increase. Yeah, because it's been, before this pandemic, I've been trying to get here for quite some time and now we're able to talk. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a 10% increase. Because I know in the construction field, I'm myself, the things have not skyrocketed. So at 145, it might be 155 or 160. But we're still talking pennies compared to what it could cost you if they did, if they read list this and shut it down on you. So I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, so you said about a 20, about a 20-foot span and it's gonna be two-lane bridge?
It'll be two-lan, it'd be no different than it is. It'll just be, it'll be able to withhold trucks. Right now, the truth is, is trucks shouldn't be going across it at all.
Right.
Yes, it's got a 310 limit, but if somebody came out, looked at it again, they probably shut it down. Um, so I'm, uh.
How, uh, how high above the existing bridge is this bridge gonna set, you know?
It's gonna set basically right where it is, right on it.
But as far as above it though, cause I can't touch it. So there's gonna be a space between the new bridge and?
No.
No, it's gonna be?
It's gonna be right in the same place as this slab. Um, we're gonna take the slab out. They'll remove that chunk.
Okay.
And, 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 and not touch the, and not touch the canal. So yes, that bridge will sit right on there, but it's supported on both sides.
Right, okay.
So it's one platform without putting any weight on there at all. So it's, it's just the thickness of the concrete that will stick up. And if, I can't answer you the, the truth on that.
But that's fine.
If I was to guess, it would be at least a foot thick.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's information we'd need to know as far as getting us, us, you know, our approach and whatnot, so.
I'll get you the whole, I'll get you this whole thing. This'll tell you everything.
That'd be great.
I just wanted to touch bases with you, see which direction you go. If I put this together, are we interested in doing this together?
I think it's the only way to do it, cause neither, neither town should foot the bill for it 100%.
Oh, yeah.
You know, or probably, yeah.
Right, I mean, we have to work together, yeah.
I just can't, and the law doesn't allow us to do it. So law's telling us that we have to work together or it doesn't get done.
How long have you been on the board over there?
Um, I'm on my third term.
Oh, okay, you've been there a while. Cause I think we tried to, we tried to get in touch with them one time? Yeah, it was quite a little while ago, as far as doing something, so.
Well, I'm the liaison for any construction site job. I've done an awful lot for this town. I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. I'm just not, I'm not a bridge maker. My family members have been building bridges in these little towns around us for all my life. So I'm not, I'm not a connoisseur of it, but I can tell you right now, I can get stuff done. And it just, I just need some participation. And ambition that goes with that.
We really appreciate you coming in and going through this.
Yeah, thank you very much and thanks for taking the lead on this.
If we could, you know, get copies of everything.
I will get you a package, as long as now I know that you're interested, you heard my speech. I'll get you a package so that you know exactly what was standing. I'll update the quote, the quote. And, uh, and if we can get you, then you can talk about it amongst yourselves.
Right, then we'll get back to you and maybe we can all meet, yeah, do something, yep.
Like I said, if a rock falls out of place, we're gonna shut it down. And that's the threat that I'm getting. So I'm trying to jump on it as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could, um, kinda not to do with the canal bridge, but made me think of it, I forgot to tell you one of my updates. So do you remember the, um, Emory Mills project?
The what?
Emory Mills project in Sanford?
Yes.
The bridge and everything?
We wanna make sure.
So did you see that, so they've been emailing, I saw you reply, cause you're the, the person. But they just decided that Acton and Chapel are getting a refund based on the overpayment.
Nice.
Oh, good.
It was in the attachment, so. Looks like Acton's got about five grand coming back to them, which is the amount that we could come up with and we're encouraging for. So that was good news.
Thank you.
Now, we normally have two people on that committee. I mean, on that, you were the last one.
Yep, I was the last one.
We haven't updated it since selection time and whatnot.
Are you interested in being, either one of you interested in being on the?
I'm interested in staying on it, so.
Interested in being on the Emory Mills, I think they're, what I heard last night.
I was, would you like to do it for a little bit? A little bit, yeah.
They're tentative meeting, um, Roland, Roland was gonna send out an email, but I feel like tentatively it was scheduled for the 28th at noon time, 2 o'clock? Yeah.
28th at 2?
We'll send, um, Mr. Roger's emails.
It is a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, okay.
Alright, alrighty, moving on. B, um, we've got some concerns. Tapscott, please come on.
Hi, I'm Nathan Tapscott. I live on East Shore, right in Acton and have concerns about INTO noise. Appreciate you seeing me tonight. It's not like we haven't tried. It's exciting. June 24th, email from Jennifer Rube about INTOs endorsing their legal license. But we had concerns with the noise. June 25th, my wife came to town hall to, um, register the dog. And we spoke with Ken Paul in person, Jennifer Rube's present, about the noise and if there's any permits been issued for this. And concerns about the noise level. And later that evening, my wife emailed the planning board and Ken Paul, Ken Paul and the planning board about, um, the noise and what could be done, and no reply. July 5th, Ken Paul about the noise, no reply. August 20th, so at this point, we figured the town's not gonna be involved in it. So August 21, emailed Sheriff King. August 28th, it's so bad, I called York County Dispatch, 8:02 PM. August 31st, excuse me, August 30th, my wife emailed Sheriff King. September 4th, she emailed the code enforcement officer, Sheriff King, Selectman Walsh and Windsor, no reply. September 11th, emailed the code officer, Sheriff King, Selectman Walsh and Windsor regarding the noise, no reply. But she did call Selectman Windsor and spoke with him about it. That same evening, I called dispatch at 7:15 about the noise. My wife called again, dispatch at 9:27. She called twice, 9:27 and 9:41. So it's not like we haven't tried. This is a copy of all the emails.
Thank you.
So now I have just three to check on. We built our home in 1998, moved to Sanford, peace, quiet, and a nice environment to bring up our two children. We moved here, when we moved here, the building at INTOs was used for outdoor stores. Then it was a hot air store, gas pumps, then Big Daddy's, which was a restaurant that had bands sometimes, but always inside. We're currently having problems with noise from INTOs, mostly music, and hearing the burnouts. I call it music, by the time it gets to my house, it's noise. In the past years, the outside music from INTOs have been primarily on Sunday afternoon with a handful of Saturdays, typically ending on 5:00 PM. Never did I hear outside bands at night. I wanted to spend the Sunday out in nice weather, I'd be forced to listen to whoever, whoever INTOs had playing that day. This year, the opening weekend started with burnouts, loud music. The following weekend, I made it to INTOs to address the matter and it was quickly taken care of. Carrying the public meeting for the local license, my wife sent an email with our concerns, stated no burnouts, keep the music level down, and no bands in the evening. As the weeks went along, there were outside bands primarily Saturday and Sunday afternoon. Then it started on Friday nights. It was pretty quiet at first and the bands were more frequent and louder. At this point, now the outside bands are every Friday night along with Saturday and Sunday. They've, they've also had bands on holidays and the entire, uh, I think. INTOs is in a commercial zone, which, as far as I can tell, their use is food facilities, offering food and beverages prepared on premises, sit-down. I would say the live entertainment is accessory use. I do not see anything about loud entertainment. The noise from INTOs should stay on the property and not spill onto residential zones. The property, the probably outside entertainment that it must comply with the noise ordinance or it affects many other people. The Town of Acton ordinance has a section called Good Neighbor Design Sanes. It is section 5.11. And 5.11.3 deals with noise. 5.11.3 A's findings and purpose it states. It is recognized that people have a right to and should be insured in a environment free from excessive noise that may jeopardize their health, safety, or welfare, or degrade the quality of their life. This section is enacted to protect, preserve, promote the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life through the reduction, control, and preventive prevention of excessive noise. The definition of loud and unreasonable noise is intensity of which exceeds the standard and set forth section 5.11.1.1C.1. Noise level is to be unlawful for any person to emit or cause to be emitted and noise beyond the boundaries of the his or her consequences in excess of noise levels established in this section. 5.11.1.3.1C is a chart showing the sound pressure level limits, dB-A. The dB is decimals and A is the moment of measurement. The limit is 60 decimals daytime and 50 nighttime for commercial zone. Section 5.11.3.1D, manner of enforcement. It states the code enforcement officers directed to enforce the provisions of this section. My wife has sent several emails of the town back complaining about the noise and has not received one reply. The problem has been ignored, ignored. Ignoring problems does not make them go away. As the summer went on, the problems got worse. We are forced to listen to noise from INTOs. We have no choice and are forced to listen. We cannot get away from the noise without leaving our home. If my neighbors want to listen to music from INTOs, they can get down there and listen to it. It doesn't have to be pretty loud enough. The people a mile away are forced to listen to it. I live across a 70% move mile from INTOs in a straight line according to the Town of Acton Interactive map. If it has a limit of 60 decimals, why can't I hear it from my home? 60 decimals is a sound level that two people have a conversation 3 feet apart. I like spending the summer, time outside, especially in the summer. This summer has been different. I typically try to go somewhere and sit Saturday and Sunday so I don't have to listen to the noise. I love to live where I do and I do enjoy the outside, not to be forced to listen to bands from INTOs. Friday nights are worse. Sometimes I can barely hear the bands, other nights it's targeted louder. When it is nice out, when it's a nice night to sit on the porch, I go in and shut, shutting the windows and doors and try to eliminate or at least reduce the noise from the INTOs. People that don't have to listen to it thinks, people that haven't listened to it thinks it's no good deal. But after a few weeks, it becomes unbearable, cannot get away from it, or shut it off. When the dance is so loud, shut, shutting the window and doors, and even turning the TV on, doesn't eliminate the noise. I left my home Saturday for the afternoon so I did not have to listen to noise from INTOs, as I do many weekends. Then came back around 5:00. After the band ended, my wife and I sat outside. I told her how quiet and peaceful it was, just the way it used to be. I wish it could be like this again. If INTOs were operating within their approval and did not violate the Acton zoning ordinance, specifically noise ordinance, I would not be here tonight and it would have been a great summer. Thank you for your time. Any questions for me?
I just wanna point out one thing, just for clarification. So, um, the, the one and only email that came to me as a town administrator was read at the public, was, your concerns were read that night. And I have responded to all of your emails.
And I did mention something that the wife's been asking.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, yeah. And we've shared, any of them that the board gets, certainly the board didn't get the first two or three. But if you get them, you're good about forwarding it to me. I forwarded them to Mr. Martinez. I think that the board is gonna need some time to look into it, but I, I think that it's important to, to say, to some extent, because of COVID, you know, he's not in a direct violation that the code enforcement officer isn't aware of or isn't allowing something. So I just wanna put that out there until we can sort it out. This isn't all one-sided. He's been given permission to some extent because during COVID, we don't wanna see any business shut down.
Because of COVID, he doesn't have to have bands. He doesn't have to have loud bands. Sometimes it's bands and we barely hear them and then we don't hear them. And sometimes it is so loud, you can have a one, two, three-person band and not have to have everybody from a mile around listen to it.
I just don't want it to be a complete, that he's, you know, he's intentionally doing this, cause I believe he's had conversations. But the board needs to gather all that information with everybody and.
Yes.
The first email you sent to Dave and I, uh, I don't know why you didn't email Kim with it as well, but.
Well, only because, I don't know if she's still there, but Kim's daughter works here, she works there, so.
Okay, well, it's a whole board, so, uh, that email I, okay, no, it's okay. That email, when I got it, I did forward that email directly to Jennifer.
And Jennifer forwarded it to Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez gave a response back to the board.
Yeah, and I apologize for not emailing you back, but it has, it's been working internally, so.
Should it be allowed to violate the noise ordinance? I've watched, I've been watching, since then, I've been interested in Town, watching all the selectmen's meetings, planning board meetings, and I watched the dog rescue place go up for approval, and people concerned about the noise. And Ken stood up there and told them their subject to the, they cannot exceed the 60-decibel limit for a dog rescue place, and we've been putting up with this all summer.
Well, we will look into it.
We will definitely, we're...
You know, we're working on it, okay.
So how many weeks do you want, one or two weeks before we put it back on the agenda so that he can come back?
Well, we ought to have a week to meet with...
Yeah, at least two weeks.
So we're planning on...
I don't want to say don't have anything, but if they're going to have a function where they're going to have loud bands or whatever, you know, don't give them a free pass to do whatever they want all summer. Have them come with the board and say, geez, we have a special event this weekend, can you get permission to do it, or something like that. It's been a free pass all summer. Nobody's done anything. They've done whatever they want all summer.
Well, I will reach out to you directly when the board's ready to put it back on the agenda, so that you can certainly come in here, go present in an open meeting, so that it can be a paper trail.
Thank you for coming in. Yep. All right, C, Dennis Long.
Hi, I'm Dennis Long. I was raised in Acton, I started working on the roads in Acton in 1992 with my grandfather, Robert Yen. I stopped working on the roads when I retired. 98, I worked for my uncle Bernard during the ice storm. He called me up, I was actually living in Wells with my wife, they didn't lose power in Wells, really. We did here for two weeks. I worked for the Thomas Shapley in 2009, 2010 for David Mitchell Sr. 2009, I started working for DW Excavation, and I also worked for the Town of Acton until 2018. I'm currently working for DW Excavation. I've worked on road projects in Acton, Shapley, Sanford. I've done everything from catch basins to coal patching. I have many years' experience plowing town roads and private ways. 2018, I applied for the road commissioner position. I underwent the application process, in the end, I lost out to Mr. Letourneau. I was told I didn't have enough computer skills. You know, the town, up to two months ago, hadn't used the same computer program that you said I was not capable of doing. Even though I was never asked about my computer skills, right? Fast forward a little while here to 2020, August 10th, Joe Letourneau passed away. The road commissioner job came available again. I'm pretty sure I was the only applicant, right? Because they threw out all the applications, right? And we know why.
They can't answer that.
Well, I know. But I can, it was because I didn't have a CDL. Even though I had my permit in 2012, I told Jen that I would go get my CDL. I don't see the need to have a CDL, the town does not own a CDL truck. I don't know if you guys are planning on buying one, but that's for later on in the year. Nowhere in the road commission ordinance does it say that the road commissioner has to have a CDL license. After 11 years of work at the service, working for the town roads, nine years on District Two, I was never even given the decency to get an interview. If the selectmen would have given me the opportunity to explain myself, they would have heard my nine-month plan for winter and spring cleanup. Because I wasn't given the opportunity, I'll explain it now. I was going to buy a one-ton and do fall cleanup, maintenance, road grading, shoulder repairs, bulk cleaning, you know, the normal fall stuff that needs to get done every year. I have two people that have CDL licenses that are willing to put a truck on and work for me for the Town of Acton, but I was never asked. I got three people with one-ton, that are willing to, plus mine, that are willing to do it. I mean, I wouldn't have bought $100,000 worth of equipment for a nine-month job, and there's nothing saying that I'm going to have anything after that. I am obviously going to subcontract, would have subcontracted it all out to local contractors first, then I would have found other people if I needed something that I did not own. There's lots of trucks that you can use that do not require a CDL, right? Scott used one for two years probably, that International, right? I mean, there's other ways to do it.
So, I'm just going to interrupt you for just one second, because I just want to make sure, before you get too far, that you're aware of the board's, by you disclosing all of this information in a public meeting, and you choosing to do that, that's going to give the board of selectmen the right to disclose their thoughts as well.
They can, anybody can hear anything anybody's going to say, I'm a big boy, and anybody can say what they want. I gave you guys the opportunity, that's what you want to do.
And when I called you, so let's go back to that. So just to catch everybody up, this is how the process worked. The board of selectmen met, and they put together a road commissioner opening. Every time the board of selectmen change, the openings change. I've hired five different assistants in the last 10 years, every one of those job duties are different. As times change, things change. This board, as a whole, three to zero, decided that they wanted the road commissioner to have a CDL. That was their decision.
Well, what's the purpose?
But let me just finish, so we can get to where, that was their decision, okay? You've got to be able to type 85 words a minute, not for this job, but for another job, that's their right to put that in there. So they advertised it with that. They don't have to interview people that don't qualify for the job, but I want you to tell these people, when I called you, what did I say specifically? The board of selectmen encouraged you to get the permit process started back immediately and reapply. Did I say that?
You did, but with the COVID, the way it is, it takes you seven hours to get a driver's license.
But listen...
You've got to put stuff in the mail.
The board wanted you...
You've got to wait on the state of mind, which is not an easy thing to do.
Which we understand that, we just want you to get started.
We were trying to help you, let's get the process started.
And I told you I was willing to do that.
I know, so that's why when you sent the email that you wanted to be on the agenda, I said, let's just come in and talk about it, because you're not out of the, you're not off the list. You know what I mean? It's not, you know what I mean?
I just wanted the townspeople to know my qualifications, and that I have tried to go for this job.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
And I feel that I've gotten a fair run at it.
Well, we can't discuss the last two candidates, how one application was to another, that can't be discussed. But this one, the board very clearly chose, and that's their right, and you can ask any attorney to say they want them to have a CDL.
I'm not saying it's legal, I'm not saying it's illegal. I'm saying it is not, right? To put stipulations on something that has no relevance to the job, you should have asked me to get a pilot's license, it's the same relevant. I, there's nothing that says that the road commissioner has to plow for the Town of Acton in a CDL truck.
It's something that they can choose to add, and, I mean, I thought that it was...
The road commissioner is a foreman, it's not an everyday guy. There's many road commissioners.
What if that everyday guy has to get into one of those vehicles to drive it?
I mean, at the end of the day...
What if somebody's out?
There's no reason.
But there could be, right? I mean, that's why...
A guy in that truck though can't.
I mean, that was my reasoning, is what if something happens, we've got a huge snowstorm and one of you guys, whatever, is sick or something.
One of your, one of your lease trucks, okay, one of the guys that's going to come in and do the plowing with a CDL truck, say he gets sick, okay? Whether he's sick for five hours or whether he's sick for five days, we want the road commissioner to be able to...
Like jump in.
Hop into that truck with a license to be able to drive that truck.
Two years ago, when Dave Langley did this end of town, at that time, he had one truck. So if I had two trucks lined up, and one called out, I would still have one truck plus other trucks to pick it up.
Well, I mean, we're just trying to explain why we did the CDL, it has nothing to do with you, it has to do with, we were just, you know...
It just feels like a job.
Absolutely nothing to do with you.
We had no idea you were going to even apply for this job this time around.
I didn't, I didn't either.
Okay, so it's all irrelevant, so...
Take it the way that you and I left the phone conversation. The board meant what they said when I said to you, start the process, reapply.
Get that application back in.
You know what I mean? Even if your next application says, since my last, you know, I've done this and this, I mean, I can help you get CDL appointments and get you moved on the list. We've tried to help you behind the scenes and not turn it into this, but at the end of the day, it would have looked worse for the board to interview people that don't meet the criteria. So what was the purpose of us meeting, typing this up, paying, run it, if we weren't going to follow it?
Yeah, but people get hired for jobs all the time when they don't fit 100% of the criteria.
But that was, that's the board's choice.
As time is going on, stuff's not getting done. The shoulders are washed out up on Buzzard Road, the shoulders are washed out on the Harper Road.
And that's why...
It could easily be a major issue, and you guys keep putting it off, more and more and more.
You were the very first person I called, I encouraged you to go get, to call Department of Motor Vehicles the very next day, Denny, it's the conversation we had, and the board encouraged you to do that, and that's, and they know it's short-lived, that's why they only posted it for two weeks.
But Jen, you told him he had two weeks.
All right, don't speak for the other.
I did not tell him on the phone that he had to get his CDL in two weeks, Ms. Long.
Well, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, I never, that was not said. And Mr. Walsh was present when I had that conversation with your husband.
Alrighty. Okay, I guess we're going to move on to public comments. Anybody have any?
Petition under D, we added.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one. Petition, number D, petition, sorry. There we go, let's get the right one. Thank you. Okay, what do we got here?
All right, so this one gets a little interesting, because there's a few things going on with it, and I do have some legal advice, so I can read it word for word in the... So essentially, the circulator of this, Mr. Jeff Donahue turned this in to me on September 10th. It is a petition that, very importantly, the words say, "To the municipal officers of the Town of Acton, in accordance with 30A MRSA 2522, we, the undersigned voters registered in the Town of Acton, request the municipal officers place the following article before the voters for the town." And not to go back, but this is another example. He came to me, when he dropped these in on the 10th, and said, "I'd like to go ahead and put this on the secret ballot in November," which references 2528. You can't do that. The voter signed this believing that it's going to be 2522. The statutes are different, you can't tell people one thing and then change it. I sent the email over to Mamie Municipal with a copy of it, and asked them, said, you know, because of COVID, because that was the reasoning, in the beginning, he had every intention of wanting it to be at a 2520, 2522 is an open town meeting, where we all get together and raise our hands. 2528 forces a secret ballot election, so that in November, you would come and get a ballot with this question. So when the voter signed this, they signed it, whether they knew what 2522 was or not, they signed it thinking and believing and agreeing with it going on the ballot that way. Unfortunately, the circulator does not have the authority to just change that, okay? So now we're into COVID, and we're in open town meetings, what legal is saying is that you have the authority, as a board of selectmen, to put any question on any warrant at any time pursuant to 2522 or 2528. You can take this, and it has nothing to do with the signatures, I mean, you would use the signatures as far as, you know, maybe supporting whether or not you think the town really wants us on there, and certainly, I haven't certified them yet, but there's a lot of them. You have the authority to do that, but he can't change the method now that it's been turned in. So, and the law says, and for some reason, my ear is just not working out. It can, you have to deal with it within 60 days, you can either wait and put it off to next June, or it is your call to put it on the secret ballot referendum. He did request that you put it on the November ballot, we would just need to double-check the law and count backwards very quickly, because you have to do an order to the municipal clerk, say the 45 or 60 days, and then we've got to be teetering on that, so I'd have to check that. So I guess before, put a whole lot of, you know, work into it, what are your thoughts on it?
We have to have a public hearing on this as well?
If it, based on 2522, you wouldn't have to, because the open town meeting would serve as the public hearing.
All right, good.
But if you did it through a secret ballot, yes, you'd have to have it, and we would recommend that you do it via Zoom.
And if we put this on the ballot, and it goes through...
So the question for public, how are we going to enforce it?
How do we enforce it?
Can't.
Just that's, you know, so that's...
So do we send it to legal, and, I mean, do we send it to our attorney? Well, we can't send it to our attorney, because there's a conflict, we'd have to send it to a different attorney. Because Mamie Municipal just gives us general advice, they won't tell us if it's... But it says, "Are you in favor of establishing a town ordinance that reads, 'No person shall spread, discharge, or permit the discharge of straight road salt, sodium chloride, salbry, brine, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride on any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within 300 feet of water wells.' Sand and salt mix for the aforementioned shall not exceed 20%."
Of salt.
And that's the thing, and I'm not saying that, but how do you, you know...
Right, are we going to go out?
Problem is, is most people's wells are within 300 feet of the road. And your Resource Protection, half the Town of Acton Resource Protection, we would have to dictate what the state does. The state's not going to turn around and say, okay, we're going to, we're going to put down sand from now on. Well, the state does not want to put sand on, they put straight salt brine down.
I was going to say, how are we going to tell them?
The state's telling us to get rid of sand and go straight salt, okay? This is impossible, and the problem is, when you have an ice storm, okay? I did this, I'm still doing this job, okay? You can't go out there with, you know, a 20% mixture in an ice storm and make the road safe, without dumping boatloads of sand on it, so...
Here's a response from, I'm not going to interrupt the legal, just so you get the exact word, "So dear Jennifer, the circulator of the petition does not have the authority to alter the petition after the petition is signed. The petitioners that sign the petition have a right to have the petition submitted as is. If changes are made, it's unclear whether or not the company who signed the petition would have signed it in the first place. If the circulator wants to change the wording of the petition as such to require the municipal officers to put the article on the next secret ballot instead of calling a warrant, the circulator should probably be required to circulate and submit a petition to that effect." But then she goes on to tell me, you do have the authority, but, I mean, I guess the first thing is, do we send it to our...
You have the authority to do what?
You have the authority to put it on a secret ballot, but he does not.
Okay, but if we decided to?
But you said 2522 is open town meeting?
I mean, you have the right to wait.
I'd rather have it right at open town meeting. Know where everybody can see who's voting for this, so when it all goes downhill...
They can talk about it, too.
You never did it.
I mean, is it, based on what David's saying, I'm certainly not questioning him, I mean, do we, do we look and determine, one of the first things we do with most petitions is to see if it's even deemed legal? Because if it can't be enforced...
Right, why go through all this?
The state take care of their roads in a different way.
So why don't we get a legal opinion?
I mean, if, you know, is that a reason to, I'm not saying, I'm not encouraging Mr. Donahue, anybody to reject it, please. I'm just saying, but you can't put an article on that's not legal.
I'd say we start with legal.
Yeah, that's the right thing, too. Go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting this in front of the people.
Yeah, because a lot of people signed it, I mean...
Yeah, no, it's...
And I mean, you don't want this, you know, if you're near the water and stuff like that, I can understand that.
I can understand why some people did it, because, you know, sometimes there is some overuse of salt, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
But the problem is, by doing this, what it does, it ties the road agent's hands when he needs to put it down.
Right.
And, you know, all it's going to take is one person to say, well, that was a little salty than the last one, you know, he's 30%, you know? Oh, boy.
And how, but how do you prove that?
And a lot of these, a lot of these are like, I'm just going to say, like Milton Mills Road 109, we can't control any of those, those are state roads.
It's a, right?
Well, no, we do maintain...
It's a, any road within Shoreland District Resource Protection.
We maintain, we maintain Fox's Ridge and Milton Mills Road, it is a state aid road, but we do take care of it.
Just take care, okay, so...
But the problem is, there's many sections down through both those roads that are in Resource Protection.
Right.
So you'll have spots where...
You'll have some, and then you'll have none, and then you'll have, yeah.
And like I say, I mean, a lot of wells are within 300 feet of the road.
Most wells are, because most houses are only 75 feet out the road.
Yeah.
You know, septic systems in the front, 100 feet from there is your well, so 200 You know, septic systems in the front, 100 feet from there is your well, so 200 feet. So, every single well going up Milton Mills Road, or any road in the town of Acton typically, you're gonna have, so that really makes it very difficult.
Right. Well, let's go through legal and then...
Yep.
Get back to it. How's that sound?
I'm probably gonna reach out to a different attorney because there is some conflict, so I'll reach out to somebody not tied to Tallow Street.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda for next week. And we'll need to get the timeline counted because we could be pushing, even having the ability to put it on November.
Is this something we should have the Road Committee look into?
I mean, I don't think that any input from them would be bad, especially when it comes to public hearings and stuff. They may want to... Yeah, but if it's not legal, it's doing another one of those things. Why bother putting down work and do it if it's...
Let's get legal first and then go from there.
And then decide if you want them to look at it. But I'm sure they can add input, but we've gotta make sure it can even go on ballot.
Alright, anything else? Alright, public comment. Do we have anybody that...
Some people don't like it because I get up here and ask a question of what's, what's happening or why this is like it is. I was really offended last week with town employees attacking two citizens of the town. I thought that was really in poor taste, and I really don't think as a selectman you should allow employees to publicly try to chastise citizens. I think that's a wrong thing.
Was it an employer or a selectman?
And it was an employee. And a selectman, but it was an employee. And even the selectman's an employee because we're paying you. You work for us. The other thing is, and this has happened an awful lot in the last year, I don't know if anybody that's running this town understands the meaning of an ordinance. An ordinance is law. The selectmen don't have the authority to alter that ordinance. Only the townspeople can. And this has happened quite a few times in the last year with the Warrant Finance Committee, with the Road Committee, and different committees. And it's a constant battle. And this is why I get up and I say things, because what is happening is just totally wrong. You have to follow the ordinances of the town of Acton. You can't supersede them. And this is why, like I said, this is why I get up and say stuff, because it's wrong.
Did anybody on this board approve that, them to do what they were doing?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I'm kinda trying to figure out, you're throwing out that we approved something to be, an ordinance to be broken.
You just, you just did by changing the requirements for the Road Commissioner to have a CDL. The ordinance clearly states what you have to be, or what the requirements are.
We can put in any, any job thing to add on.
Not against the ordinance, you cannot. It's against the law. You tried to do this, how many times with the Warrant Finance Committee this year? And you ended up finding out from legal what you was doing was wrong. We had the right to do what we were doing. And then to undermine, tell all the employees, the department heads, that they can't meet with the Warrant Finance Committee with a conversation, it's a power trip on this board, and it's absolutely disgusting.
It was a power trip for the Finance Committee to do what they were doing last year also. That was disgusting.
You have no clue, Mr. Winchell. The personal vendetta is gonna bite you one of these days.
I'm sure it will.
Are you looking that up?
Yeah, so just for clarity, I'm looking for a commissioner ordinance. So, I mean, it's adopted pursuant to a particular statute, but nowhere in it does it say, you know, some of the things that we know are law, you know, that you've gotta be 18 years of age, you've gotta be a resident of the state. Some of the things that we know are law about the Road Commissioner, those aren't in here either, so...
I know we've gone through those before, back before...
The qualifications of the Road Commissioner are not listed in here.
Okay.
Unless I, it's one of these statutes. But if the board so wishes, I can look into it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the direction of the board?
It doesn't, it doesn't give any difference between appointed or elected, does it?
Um, no, I'm not gonna...
Because that's the situation we're kind of in right now.
Right, we're kinda in a different situation. It's not like he's, he's running. It would be, we're hiring.
I don't think there's anything in there that ties that. I mean, if it said in there, if the qualifications of the Road Commissioner were listed in here, like all of the duties, and I would 100% agree with him that that was the case. I'm not saying that, but I would like another week to go through some of these statutes with a fine tooth comb.
Okay, that sounds good.
I guess, you know, the board has the right to ask for certain qualifications.
I believe you do, but...
And honestly, I mean...
Let's make sure we're doing it right.
Myself, I would encourage Mr. Donahue to reapply, okay? I would do that. And I have to refrain from any decisions. I have to make sure I let everybody know that. But, at the end of the day, everybody deserves an interview. And I believe what we did last week was, because of the situation, we felt we ought to go back out. We were not discarding the application. It never was discarded, but we decided that we had to do it two more weeks because of lack of stuff on the application. Obviously, I can't get in details, but I hope he does reapply. And, um, and I don't believe we're breaking any laws. We can ask to put stuff on, to hire people if we need to be, but we also, as a select board, can also make considerations for stuff to be done in a later date. There's other ways, other ways of doing things. Nothing's set in stone, but, um, we'll see what happens in another week or two.
Alright. Any other public comments? Anybody else have something to say?
I'm Tony Candoli, and I live over on Stewart Drive. I've been a property owner in Acton since 85. First thing I want to compliment Jennifer on updating the Facebook page about putting down that the Wakefield presentation was today. It started at 4:30, so if I came here, I was interested. Because I brought it up to her, I was getting my vote registered in June about seeing trucks going over that bridge and having it collapse. The other thing I brought up, talking roads. To get to Stewart Drive, which is on Grady's Lake, I go past the red schoolhouse on Buzzell Road. That road's falling apart, and it's really fallen apart the last couple of years due to all the construction, the clear cutting of the property on Buzzell Road and the houses being put. And there's three there now, and it's gonna be five more. And you're also talking, they, Markel was to put 18 over on Youngley Ridge Road. I thought last year, there was supposed to be a weight limit on the roads. And I remember seeing the signs, then they all disappeared.
Talking about the orange signs?
Yeah. So is there a weight limit?
It's only a seasonal weight limit. That we live, seasonal.
Some, what is season, summer or winter?
No, not spring. Spring, so what ends up happening is usually end of February.
Oh.
When the frost comes out of the ground, those are temporary weight limits. So, those will go up, usually end of February, beginning of March, and usually down by April 15th to May 1st.
Okay, so there's no real weight limits?
No, there's no weight limits on those roads.
Okay.
We can't... It's another story, but no, there's no weight limits to those roads.
And there's no way you can go back to the developer who destroyed Buzzell Road for having all the heavy trucking? Any permits that he gets can...
Yeah, there is. Except myself, I've got trucks registered for 80 to 100,000 pounds. I pay a lot of tax. They call it heavy use tax, and that tax comes into town, state, whatever.
But if his trucks are registered in Massachusetts, is it...
Well, that's a problem. You know, that's, the only problem with that is we don't get any tax money from it, but there's nothing saying we can stop them, so we got to portion plates. So, um, his tax, his tax base, his tax base pays for, allows him to do that. Now, the problem is, is, you know, you take, you take West Shore Drive, for instance, you know? There was an issue at the end where they didn't want trucks driving down there to put a house in, but all the work was going on before that. Who destroyed the road, you know, prove it? Now, the logging trucks, when I was Road Commissioner, my worst enemy was a logging truck. It wasn't dump trucks, it was logging trucks, because those guys are rolling out at 110, 120,000 pounds and, you know, destroying my shoulders and everything else. But, you know, we really can't charge them. There was one thing that I, the town of Acton can do, and I'm working down Saco right now. I'm working Saco, Scarborough, we're working on a whole place. And one thing that I had to do when I was doing work on, on a house law, I had to put a small bond up for the, I had to put a small bond for any damage that I did to the road.
And you passed an ordinance that, that is required for any new construction?
Well, I mean, we can. I mean, we set a policy to do that, but I mean, that was something that we'd have to, you know, Road Committee and I'm sure, have that meeting on.
It's something that you guys can discuss, but roads are getting destroyed, and it's not gonna get any better. And you know better than anyone, money is tight in the state's business. There's like a half a billion dollars in the red, so you're not gonna get any money from the state this year. So, you know, it, to me, it's an abuse of the property. And he needs to, someone has to be held accountable, and it shouldn't be the taxpayers of the town. So if you could look into an ordinance to have bonds put up to, the developer has to repair any damage to the public roads that he travels along. And it could be anyone in town.
But what I was talking about is like new road opening permits, okay? You know, the bond, you can't ask somebody like myself, when I come in with my excavator 80,000 pounds, to put a bond on going to my house, because I might go to my house 20, 20 times a year. Only way you could do a bond is if it would be a new road opening.
But what about if it's a new construction on a lot?
If you're doing new construction, typically you're doing a new road, new driveway, then you could do something like that, but you're only gonna hit, you know, probably half the majority, half the people that are, you know, doing stuff, because some people have existing driveways, existing roads, that you wouldn't be able to do it to.
Well, I think you said, Buzzell Road has really deteriorated really bad the last...
I believe there was plans on doing some work up there.
Yeah.
But the problem was, was somebody brought up this, the developer was gonna give some land and do this, and the road was gonna move, so I think it kinda got flipped over.
I don't know if anyone with the planning boards here, but I saw that in one of the Zoom meetings that he wanted to give some acreage, frontage. Basically, the planning board said no. He went again, went ahead anyway and deeded the property, and it's a town. And now he's having to...
I don't believe, I don't believe he can deed, he can't deed anything that the town, if the town voted on it.
Right, he didn't accept it.
He did it anyway.
He can't.
He can't.
Let me, give me a week to look into it. I know, I agree with you that there was some talk, and there, but, but it never moved forward as far as I know, but right, the town has to accept the gift. We would have registered the deed.
It was probably, uh...
Three years ago.
In the spring, it happened.
Have you shared your concerns with code enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay, have you gotten any response?
Uh, no.
Okay, alright. Give me a week, and we'll get it back on the agenda. Let me see what I can dig up for you.
Thank you for coming in. Anybody else? Yep.
Lesley Verland, the deeds were recorded in October, I think of 2018 as York County registered deeds to, to deed the 15-foot along that stretch of Buzzell Road to the town.
Was that voted on at a town meeting at all?
It did not go to town meeting.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta vote to accept anything like that.
It's, the planning board told them no, that it needed to be easements, and then about a month later, the deeds popped up in the registry of deeds.
Can you tell Leslie, based on the maps, if it's been mapped over to the town?
I did not, I did not look at the map, I saw the deeds, so...
Any...
Yes, you're set, we'll set...
Anybody else?
Yes, Peter, he's been...
Come on up.
We're gonna save him for last.
Kind of relief, right? I guess.
Because we all remember Peter. Peter's our, um...
The last time I was here was about the gym.
A gym, a gym.
Luntzergill.
Yes.
I had a couple of questions and a thought. The building that the gym is now in, was in, is still full of equipment. If you folks decided what you're gonna do with that building? Is there any plan in place to utilize that building for anything other than just to sit there?
Not right now, I don't believe.
No.
I mean, the gym is still sitting in there, so it's...
Yeah, I mean, what...
Basically, we shut down in March, and that's where it stayed.
And it was shut down because of financial reasons, by the way?
Right.
Well, primarily shut down because of COVID.
Well, finances, COVID, there's a couple...
There were the financial, there were other issues.
It was the reason we shut the gym down. So...
But the underlying problem with gym names is that there wasn't enough money to fund it. That's the...
Yeah, but that was not the reason the gym was shut down, so...
So if COVID wasn't in place, would the gym be open now?
Most likely.
As long as we were getting...
Yeah, as long as we had money, I mean...
At the time we shut it down, there was money enough to keep us rolling to town meeting.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, we were trying to get to...
And at that point, we had made a decision whether or not we were gonna shut it down or not, but then COVID hit, and then...
Gotcha. So I have a thought, a question. What do you think the likelihood of that gym opening up again, just, you've got a lot of pressure in the next couple of years? Is that gym gonna open up again? Or is it gonna sit there?
I can't answer that right now.
I don't...
I mean, my, my main concern is on the COVID side.
Gotcha.
Okay? There's no full-time staff, there's no full-time cleaning people and things of that nature over there.
It's not gonna happen anymore.
Right, so that's, you know, that's the problem right now, and like I say, that all is COVID-related. And I remember the day very clearly, I was talking to Jennifer on the phone. We were bouncing things back and forth about the pandemic and whatnot. And I said to her, I says, "You know something? The gym is still open." I said, "We need to do something there," and then both of us agreed that, yeah, we need to just put a lock on it for now and figure out where we're headed.
My guts told me when following this for the last year, the town of Acton really doesn't want to be in the gym business anyhow. Frank, that's a bit, you gotta really wanna be running it.
Well, that's, that's...
And I think our insurance company told us the same thing.
Says we shouldn't be in gym business because...
I had a thought the other day, and I don't even know if this is, that's any merit or not. What would you three, three think if a nonprofit was established and they took that gym? Now, you guys lease it to the nonprofit with the equipment, and you have no responsibility. They take it over. Quite all they want you to do is lease it to them for like a fucking year, and maybe run a snowplow, blow it everywhere. Otherwise, they, the nonprofit takes care of everything, all expenses, all liabilities. You have no, no responsibility other than making that available as a, whatever you wanna call it, a nonprofit. How about if I said this? Suppose I told you I was willing to fund the establishment of a nonprofit. I'm not paying for a nonprofit, I'll, I'll, I would be willing to fund the establishment. Now, I'm gonna have to do a survey, and I live in the town, and find out how many people here want to join the gym, what kind of money you're owing them. I am not gonna pay for a gym for people we have, for free. I can't hold that, I would have to, like, but I would be willing to fund the initiation, if I'm right, worth probably, of a nonprofit, and see if I could get enough people here as members to join that gym. We cover all expenses, all I want the town to do, and it's a pretty big gap. I understand, that's a pretty big ass. Let us lease that gym on a yearly basis from you guys, from what, it's almost nothing to you, with the equipment. And I understand the equipment is the fire department, so I got that. But unless you tell me they're using it, they probably don't care anymore. I can check that out.
Right.
But that was just a thought occurred to me the other day, because that building is just sitting there.
We would have to check with legal and everything, make sure the liabilities and...
But, but my, you understand my friends, but I don't want the town to incur any liability at all, so...
But we still own the building, so, yeah.
But if legal would draw out, you know, if, you know, no liability is incurred by the town, whatever they need for documentation to support that, so, any accidents, problems, COVID-related or not, that comes back, and anybody in there, they can come back and, and make a settlement. That's, that's another profit. We have to have insurance to cover all that.
Okay.
So that was what I wanted you folks to consider, just give me an idea what you think. If it has any merit at all, because if it doesn't, you know, I'll let it go.
We can...
So I just, I just speak to legal, and Peter came to me a couple of weeks ago so we could kind of be prepared to see if it was even worth the conversation. And it is certainly a possibility, especially based on the way you did the ambulance over there, that you could lease it to a nonprofit. Our town's attorney would put in all of the stipulations and the numbers on the insurance, and the certificate of insurance would be no different than an independent contractor proving it to us every year. There are some ways that it could happen, but I didn't dig deep into it without knowing what direction you guys were heading.
Alright.
We'd probably have to turn the equipment over to the nonprofit, which would be the best thing to do, because...
Then we wouldn't have to...
You don't want our equipment in a nonprofit's building.
Exactly.
Which, the grant, I mean, that grant was in 2001, 2, 3, somewhere in through there. Which, the grant, I mean, that grant was in 2001, 2, 3, somewhere in through there. Yeah, yeah, I think it was, I don't think it was any later than 2003. So that, you know, whatever was done with that original grant for that equipment has long since, you know, expired out, so. If, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. Gets us out of the liability if the, if the nonprofit would take over the entire building as far as heat, lights, general expenses.
Everything.
Yeah, yeah, everything, so.
My thought is that if people just tell them, but there's hurdles to get around that, COVID, it's not going to happen. You start to get into the concern of full-time maintenance, it's not going to happen. I know that. So we have a facility there, that our people in this town would like to use. Is there a way you can make it available to them? It takes the town off the hook for any kind of liability. That is really what my motivation was. A nonprofit was the first thing I heard, and it might be a way to do it.
Yeah, we, the only way, one thing we would have to worry about is like the maintenance on the building, okay? Now, and we'd have to make sure there was some sort of agreement that any maintenance over certain things, like.
Building's a serial responsibility.
But we're known about it, you know, we approve it. We still, we would still have to approve any, any maintenance, you know, because we don't, we alter on the building or something like that, you know, we, stuff that we'd have to know, but, you know.
A lease could be written to cover, you know, would be covered, you know, would cover who's responsible for what, so, you know, I'm not opposed to it.
Neither am I.
That's what you want to through, is a little play.
Is that other than the idea we had before?
Okay, so that's your.
Let us finish legal.
Right, we have to.
Jennifer. Yeah, okay. Yeah, let her finish legal side, and we'll see.
Give us a little bit of time, couple of weeks, and then we'll let you know when to come back.
Right now, you guys wouldn't be even, I mean, we got quite a bit of time, we still got this COVID thing going on and all that. I mean, you got plenty of time to do your research and do this up, so I mean.
Also, keep in mind.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, after taxes would be nice.
After taxes.
Do we know how much oil is in that tank over there right now?
I'd have to look.
Okay. Because town meeting only authorized electricity.
Right.
So, you know, come.
Have we drained it?
Real cold weather, not yet. I don't, you know.
We don't drain it because you have water in the west.
And remember, we're still using, the rec is still using that back area, so.
We'll have to figure that out.
Yeah.
We'll wait for, we'll all set.
Thank you. Great idea.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Sliding, Jennifer, I had a few comments and concerns regarding Iron Tales. I live on 12th Street, particularly Family Drive, so I don't think anybody's ever closer to that than I am, right corner in the, right around there. And I'm a realist, I, there's, you know, there's two issues at hand. There's people that are leaving there, and then there's the entertainment. My gripe is particularly with the people that are leaving there. And most specifically, I guess I'll preface this with a question. I was coming home from work one day, and I see a sign right in front of my road from the York County Sheriff's Department telling me to watch out for motorcyclists. So I don't know who, I don't know if you guys know who did that, if it was something, it was the owner that asked for that, or if it was the sheriff's department that decided not with that, I don't know.
The state roads, so they put it on. They have those marquees, and they move all over the place. On 109? You're talking about the one on 109?
Yeah, right on 109.
Yep, yeah, they move them all the time and put different things on there. It's just a courtesy to.
It's courtesy to the, the motorcyclists?
Yeah, I guess you could say that.
The state, the sheriff's department did it, that was their sign.
It was a yes.
They would put it wherever they deem necessary.
Probably just letting people know there's more motorcycles there. I said, they probably put it up so people are aware that there's more motorcycles in that area, so.
I think there was a large ride going in there that day, too.
And maybe that's what it was, you know, just to make other people aware, you know.
I, I've lived there for 10 years, and in the, and since Iron Tales has been open, there's been a handful of accidents that have been motorcycle related, motorcycle on motorcycle, motorcycle operator issue. I don't know any of them that have been through somebody driving a truck, somebody driving a car, and I love the way when I see motorcycles on the road. So when I'm trying to put my one-year-old to sleep, or when I'm trying to go to bed myself, and I hear them ripping and leaving, and then I come home and I see a sign telling me to watch out for them, that's a slap in the face to me, personally. And it's just, it's upsetting that nothing's happened with the noise. I haven't contacted any of you guys, so, you know, I didn't know this happened, but I have contacted the sheriff's department, and nothing's happened. Nothing's happened multiple times. I've been told, yep, well, you know, they have a benefit, and everybody knows what happened at the beginning of the springtime. You know, burnouts right on 109, it's pretty, it's pretty apparent, it's pretty obvious. And I understand what's going on. Everybody's handling COVID in their own certain way, you know, everybody, springtime came, everybody got excited, everybody goes out, every, you know, it is what it is, I can appreciate that. I haven't, I'm still taking this very seriously. I, you know, I have a son at home, I have a wife at home, so when I hear that the code enforcement officer has allowed such and such for Iron Tales to operate outside, it just, it doesn't mean anything. It really doesn't, because we're all here, everybody has a mask on, everybody's standing six feet apart. I don't see that when I pass Iron Tales. I see everybody drinking, I see everybody partying, I see everybody one foot away from each other. So not only do I have to deal with the noise, I have to deal with, not four or five days ago, I'm in my bedroom trying to sleep, and I can clearly hear them singing a Creed song. I have to deal with, you know, COVID being an issue, I have to deal with everybody, it's just, I don't understand, nothing's happened, nothing's happened. I don't know if this is just like an free ticket thing on the sign, and I don't, I don't have any answers to mention it. Now, you guys can shed some light on this, or what's going on?
Well, we talked about it a little bit earlier, and we're working on trying to shed some light on it right now, you know? So another week or two, hopefully, we will have some answers.
And in all fairness to the board, I mean, short of the, the one email that we got from Mrs. Sab Scott that the board saw, we've been following protocol and sending them where we believe, the sheriff's department doesn't notify us when they get complaints.
No, 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 no.
So we, you know, I mean, we don't have any idea that's happening. I know when the burnouts happened, that was a big concern.
And he took care of that.
He came in, he changed all that.
And I can appreciate that, I can appreciate that. But my tax dollars go to pay the sheriff.
I'm sorry?
My tax dollars go to pay the sheriff, right? And all he's doing is parking in the front of Iron Tales, and nothing's happened, and I just can't, I mean, I know he's a busy guy, I always come from two towns, went to high school with him, I've known him my whole life, I know the guy.
But he was, I'm.
He watched it before, but.
Yeah, Deputy Shaw, but I missed what you said, the paving? Say something about paving?
No, paying. He's, his taxes are paying for the sheriff to do his job, and he's not doing his job.
And you're right, and David and I had that conversation about the deputy, because we have a local deputy, they can reinforce these ordinances as well.
And we do have the local deputy to enforce our local ordinances, that one we never did before, because we hire him out, the way we do, it can be enforced. I think probably what has to be done, you can't enforce something he doesn't know. He probably doesn't know what the ordinance is, so.
So we're going to do this, we're going to meet with Mr. Martinez, we're starting to meet with code enforcement, we'll bring in our deputy, we'll have a conversation with the, with the owner, and give us, you know, a little chance to address it now that it's come forward in the public.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
We're just kind of getting this, so.
Whether it gets shut, I don't like, you know, and there's a win-win scenario for everybody.
Right, right.
There honestly is, and you know, and there's, there's that human, you know, factor that, you know, it's a bar. I get it, you know, people leave here, but, you know, I lived there, I lived half my life there. So it's just, you know, it's something I got to look out for, for the safety of my wife, my son, you know, my neighbors, so.
Thank you.
And that one we'll put on for the 30th, because that will take me a little time to put some stuff together.
Say the 30th, okay.
That's what my goal was.
All right.
Want me to go up there and say the same thing, Jen?
He's bored if he wants to ask.
Been acting resident for seven years on Loop Road of Milton Mills. I had my fire alarms be set off from the smoke and the burnouts. I can be trying to be outside and have a peaceful conversation with my wife and my